Do we have any apologies for today, please?
I have, the only apology I have is from Amy Woodward.
Okay.
From Lenmington School.
Okay, can I ask everybody if you're not actually, if you're not speaking, can you turn, put your microphone on mute, please, so that we don't get too much background noise? Thank you. Right, okay. Item three is introduction to four members, okay, so I'll start with myself. Phil Johnson, I'm Governor at Whitestone Infant School in Lenleyton, a maintained primary school. So if you'd like, we'd like to run around the list then. Next one, I think, is Tony Dick.
Yeah, that's me, I'm a governor at Paddocks Primary School, formerly a deputy secretary of the school in Galway.
Okay. Right, and then Amy Fox.
Hi, I'm Angela Fox, I'm the head of Wogan Mills Special Schooling and Strategy Class.
Okay, Alison Davis.
Hello, Alison Davis, Head of En Valley School in Rugby.
Hi, Andy Felton, I'm Assistant Director of Finance at Walsh County Council.
Okay, thank you, Jane Rose.
Hi, I'm Jane Rose, I'm Finance Director at Mykonos School.
And C McKey.
That's, he seemed to go offline, that's Craig McKey from Budbrook.
Is that better? Craig, sorry, Craig McKey, Head of Burt's Primary and Primary Academy at Lenmington.
Okay, thank you. Colin Hayfield.
Colin Hayfield, I'm an elected councillor and portfolio holder of Education and Learning.
Long time no see, Colin, how are you?
Fine, I'm trying to combine this with another meeting as well, so. Guess why you can't see half my face, because the other half's in the other meeting.
Great. Multitasking. Dwayne Chapel.
Yeah, hi everybody, I'm Dwayne Chapel, Head of Service for Send Inclusion, Education and Tech in my service.
Thank you. Jay Andrews.
Hi, everybody, afternoon, Josh Andrews, I'm Head Teacher at Abbotstown Junior School in Rugby.
Thank you. Jackie Graham.
Sorry, Jackie's trying to quick person behind the scenes, so.
Okay. Kay Griffiths. Kay Griffiths, are you here? Are you listening, being here?
Sorry, I've been using it. Yeah, Kevin Griffiths, Chair of Governors at the Cootenend Primary School.
Okay, thank you. Larry Granelli.
Good afternoon, yeah, Larry Granelli, I'm the Chair of Governors at Walsh-on-Mont Tice of Federation of Schools and Shottary Primary School in Strufford-on-Aidan.
Thanks, Larry. Anne Baughn.
Hi, my name is Matthew Baughn, I'm the Head Teacher at St Paul's Primary School in Lenmington and also a member of the SND Inclusion Board.
Thank you. Martin Davis. Martin Davis. Okay, we're live. Mary Ann Burrows. Mary Ann Burrows.
I'm sorry, I've only just joined the meeting, I didn't hear the initial, the initial part.
Okay, all right, we're just asking people to introduce themselves to themselves.
Oh, hello, Mary Ann Burrows from the Borough Nursery in Kilmarnock, I'm the PVI representative.
Thank you very much. Michael Morgan.
Hi, good afternoon, it's Michael Morgan, but I'm a parent guardian, I'm a finance chairman of the finance activity at Rugby High School in Rugby, and I'm an academy representative.
Thank you. Anne Burton.
Hello, good afternoon everyone, I'm Nikki Burton, acting as Head Teacher at Better teaching and education school and Abbotstown Elementary School.
Nikki, thank you, thank you for agreeing to be my chair for this, for this meeting, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anne Evans.
Hello, I'm Anne Evans, I'm the Head Teacher at Evergreen Special School in Warwick, I'm probably a representative.
Okay, Neil Borcher, I think we all know. Do you want to say anything, Neil?
Yeah, Neil Borcher, I'm the school's funding and strategy manager, so I was responsible for setting up all these meetings. Hopefully women technology works.
Thank you. Fay Padfield.
Hi, Fay Padfield, Governor at Abbotstown Infant School in Rugby.
Thank you. Argun.
Hello, I'm Rose Gunn, I'm Head Teacher at Arden Forest Infant School in Balkington.
Thank you. R Harrison.
Hi, Rebecca Harrison, I'm School Business Manager at Topperdewe Junior School and Thornstone Junior School.
Okay, Sarah Bromley. Sarah Bromley. Okay, I think she's in trouble. And Sean Taylor.
Good afternoon, I'm Sean Taylor, Teachers' Union Representative and County Secretary for Warwickshire for the NASUWC.
Thank you, Sean. And last but not least, Sybil.
I'm Sybil Hanson, representing the Conde Angelican Diocese.
Thank you. I hope that's everybody, if I've missed anybody, nice to shout out. So we'll go on to the report itself, we've got a single item agenda today, so hopefully fairly straightforward. We're here to talk about schools block funding, and I think Dwayne is going to introduce the report.
So, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for coming in, and I'm just going to share the report on screen so that you can all see it. Can you just let me know, please, when you can see it, Phil? This is Sharon?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, can everybody see it? Yeah. So this is, we're looking to make recommendations on the following for the academy schools and PVI representatives, and that is the transfer of 0.5% of schools block funding. And as you can see, it's excluding additional funding for teachers paying pensions to the high needs block for 21, 22. Budget, I can see the zap, so.
Yeah, sorry, Dwayne, this is an old version of the report.
Oh, gosh, have we got the new one?
Yeah, I'm struggling to get into the system, let me see what I can, did you want to take that?
Should I take it down?
No, I can't get it in.
Yeah, this is a late, disappointing bad news. Be with me, everybody.
Give me a second, I've got PDF version, I'll just get it up on the screen, I just need to get it into where it's easier to see.
Do you want to send it to me, I can put it up?
Sorry, I can put it on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
It's that one, I think. Can you see that now?
Yes, thank you, so, okay, thank you.
Has it got at the top, has it got recommendation A is for all schools forum and recommendation, because I can't see anything now, recommendation B and C is for schools and the PVI sector decision?
Yeah.
Kay Griffiths, would you like to come in?
Yes, we have been sent a copy of this report, so we have got it in front of us, I presume?
Okay, yeah, okay. So what we're looking for recommendation for decision for A is the decision for all schools forum members, and recommendation B and C are decisions for all academy, school and PVI representatives. So the recommendations, we're asking you to agree, so the transfer of 0.5% from the schools block, excluding additional funding, as you can see, for teachers paying pensions to the high needs block for 2021, 22 budget. Looking for you to agree, the local authority submits a disapplication to the Education and Skills Funding Agency to allocate sparsity funding to all our small academies and schools. And item three, the local authority submits a disapplication to the ASFA to increase funding to all schools through the LMS factor. Can I ask you to move it up a bit, Andrew, because I can only see, okay. So the national funding formula was introduced in 2018, 19, as you can see, and the authority and the agreement from the schools forum indicated they wanted to replicate the hard national funding formula as quickly as possible. And obviously this was subject to affordability. This was achieved, as you can see, in 2020, 2021 for the first time. Even after allocated in that hard national funding formula, there was still a surplus of 2.4 million in the schools block. There is also in model number 21, 22 suggested there was additional allocated surplus of 1.7 million. Jane, your hands up.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify why there was that over allocation of funding, because I know that we discussed it in last year's schools forum, but I can't remember the explanation as to why we were getting this excess funding. Thank you.
Neil, Neil, you're on mute. Yeah.
You hear me now? Sorry, I'm moving the microphone out of the way. Yes, but the reason was is because when we got the final allocation for last year, we were given 3.6 million pounds for growth funding, but the request that went to schools forum was for 1.6 million. So that's the main reason why we ended up with a surplus last year. What's your question, Jane?
It kind of does, remind me how the growth funding is calculated? The allocation?
Well, the growth funding is allocated by central government based on what they think an individual local authority will need to fund increasing expenses. But the people that run the growth fund for Warwickshire, when they looked at the more local detail, felt that 3.6 million was more than what they felt they needed during this year. So there was a surplus.
Okay, and we think the same reason for this year's potential surplus as well?
I mean, we are modeling at the moment an extra, again, having 3.6 million in growth funding, there will be a report that will go to the December schools forum, asking to draw down part of that money, but not the whole of the 3.6. So again, we will have a surplus within the schools block. So that's why we get to the community reserve of 1 million.
Thank you.
So we're in an unusual position, the government having given us more money than we're asked with asshole.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to go back, if that's okay. So in terms of, and Neil has just explained that, so we had more growth funding last year, which we didn't anticipate, and hence now we've got sort of reserves within the schools block. We have an opportunity of you to apply to the FSA for disapplication for some form of national funding formula, and the deadline for that is tomorrow. So when we look at the 0.5 transfer, which obviously we're asking to do, we're asking to transfer the 0.5 from the schools block into the high needs block. The total amount we're asking to transfer is 1.8 million pounds. The extended sparsity funding to our 30 small primary schools will use 1.35 million of surplus funded in store. And allocated any residual surplus with LMS would give every primary and secondary maintaining school and academy a potential of an additional 4,130 pounds in 2021, 22. If we deliver the three above, that will not affect the national funding formula in 21, 22, as they are being funded for the national funding formula will come from the schools block. So just for people to know, these proposals will only give additional funding in 2021 and 2022, and they will also require the approval of the education funding in the skills agency. So the proposal, the local authority consulted, we have consulted with all mainstream academies and schools, and we did this between October 23rd and November 13th. And the three options that we consulted on was the transfer of 0.5 of our schools block funded into the high needs block to support the high needs budget in 2021, 22, to allocate additional funding to our small schools, primary schools and academies in 21, 22, that do not meet the distance factor for the sparsity fund, and what national funding factors, sorry, national funding formula factors should increase to allocate any additional funding in 21, 22. So we went out to consultation, I'm going to remove the report up, please, and the section 253 of the Schools Revenue Funded Operational Guide. And basically what they say is if you make a mission to make a transfer, you should also consider local maintaining schools and academies, and the schools forum should take these views into account before making any of their decisions. So as I said, because consultation has to happen, and it happened with 230 maintaining schools and academies from the primary and secondary phases, and in total, 31 academies and schools responded to the consultation by 5pm on the 13th of February. In addition, sorry, in addition to multi-academy trusts responded on behalf of their trusts, one with eight academies within the trust and another with six academies. It was a bit difficult, one of the academy trusts that responded on behalf of all the trusts, the trusts that also responded, which is only noted on their own anyway. So, Andrew, could you move that, please? So the years ago came from the consultation, so the schools and academies and respondents were 26, and it counts for 83.9% said yes. All responders said yes, 32, which is equated to 72.7%. Note the movement of funds and the other questions were five, and total respondents were 12, equated to 27.3%. Okay. So the reasons of why the academy schools and academies are not giving or supporting this proposal are attached to the appendix B. Do you have appendix B, everybody, with you? Shall I just, do you want me to tell you what the appendix B says?
I think we've got the opportunity to read it, do I?
Okay, so the results follow to allocate funding to four primary schools and academies and the sparsity fund. So the option three, what national funding formula factors should be increased in 2021, as I've gone below. So the OPU de-delegated early years, as you can see, mobility, no views, sparcities. So as you can see, the OPU was quite large, but the biggest percentage was no view, so. Yeah. Okay, the OPU, this can be achieved by increasing the minimum pupil limit, and it would not benefit larger primary schools or secondary schools, the smaller schools do not achieve the minimum pupil limit. De-delegated, we could use the surplus to pay for de-delegated services, and this would only benefit maintaining schools, so would not be equitable. Early years, that has to be funded from a different block, which is the early years, the SG. The LMS, it can pay to a maximum of 175,000 within the national funding formula. Increasing this LMS would benefit all schools and academies, as the local authorities prefer factor to use to allocate any surplus funding. The mobility, this is optional factor, and that is of 12,800, and that would go to 47 schools. And again, they typically are smaller primary schools. There's also to increase primary attainment funding, and obviously, as I said, it's been part of this recommendation in terms of transferring the 0.5 from the schools block. Sparsity, this has already been dealt with, also as part of this consultation. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of hands, Martin Davis, please. Martin?
Possibly unmute.
Yeah, he put his microphone on. Martin, can you hear us, did you want to make a comment?
He's left the meeting somehow.
All right, okay, all right, Fay Padfield then.
Hi, thanks, just a quick question, the response rate was very low from the consulted primary and academies, is that typical?
Fay, it's my first year at Warwickshire, so I'm going to have to call another colleagues to answer that question, Neil?
Yes, last year we went out to consultation on 0.5% disapplication, as some schools forum members will remember, and the response was 48. So 44 this year, 48 last year, so very much the same.
Yeah, I think it is fairly typical, plus I think a lot of the schools have got maybe other things on their minds at the moment, but there's other things going on. Jane Burrow, please.
Yes, so just coming back to my original question, and we talked about the additional funding for 2021, but there doesn't seem to be any certainty that we will get that same additional funding for the growth fund for 21, 22. So I guess my observation would be, any decisions that we do make, surely that would have to be subject to the confirmation of that excess funding?
Yeah. Quite right, Jane, I mean, this is, this is a very difficult process, because of the timing. We have been given a provisional allocation on the schools block DSG for 21, 22, but that is based on last year's census, or October 19 census data. And that's the first thing. We have not been notified yet what our growth funding will be, and we won't know that until about a week before December, so that's typically when they notify us what our DSG schools block is. At the same time, we will then get our overall schools funding, because the October 20 census information will be published, so we will know exactly what we're getting. So at this stage, we are just trying to estimate what we have. The problem we also have is, we have to put any disapplications in by tomorrow. And that is, that is the window of opportunity. If, when we come to do the final modeling on the final settlement between Christmas and the middle of January, and some of these options are found to be unaffordable, then we would have to withdraw those disapplications. It's just unfortunate about the timing of how this works.
No, that's great, it's, you know, it's not ideal, but I think my comment is around preserving the national funding formula for all the schools.
That's the main thing, is what we have, what we have always said we would do is we would move as quickly as we can to the hard national funding formula. The last piece of that jigsaw for us was the sparsity funding.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Ian Wood.
Thank you, Chair, I think you picked up the point I was going to make already, but really is extremely commendable, those thoughtful responses to this consultation, when you think of the context in which we're operating. So I'm similar level response to last year, and we know that so many practitioners across education settings and so many school leaders are under great pressure to do continuity of education in coronavirus, with practical challenges day by day involved.
Yeah, thank you. Andy Felton.
Just in terms of the national picture, the things we're picking up out of HM Treasury from various things we've been on at national level is they're looking to roll forward grants from last year at this stage. And there does not like to be any growth specifically beyond inflation, but there may be one-off grants in different areas to cover things that could maybe impacting into the next national year. We just don't know what those are yet, until we get the settlement, but there is some indication that they'll commit to where they were last year as a minimum.
Okay, thank you. I haven't got, I don't think I've got any of the speakers that haven't just spoken already. Is that right?
Unless Martin still, Martin Dave.
Martin, Martin Davis, you're still with us, do you want to speak?
You're on mute, Martin.
No. Okay. Right, in terms of the. Where are we? Yeah, in terms of the sparsity funding, just for clarity on that, Neil or Dwayne, what we're talking? what we're talking about is, um, if you like, um, applying that to, to all the small schools that, um, uh, that qualify rather than, uh, the distance factor being in there. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, what it is, is within the national funding formula, there's, there's two criteria that have to be met for a school to be eligible for sparsity funding. Um, the first one is that it has to have its average number enrolled year group is less than twenty one point four, and that equates to a hundred and fifty children in a primary school, for example. And the second one is for primary schools that their next nearest neighbouring school is more than two miles away. And as I think I said in the consultation document, we do have one school that is one point nine nine miles from its next nearest neighbour. And just because of that point zero one of a mile, next year potentially it would lose forty five thousand pounds of funding. So what we're saying is, is we would like to support all our small schools. Um, we have a, a small school strategy that's been worked on at the moment, um, because it, it is quite important and they seem, they are of the schools that we're finding becoming more and more into deficit. I don't know, Ian wants to add anything to that?
Absolutely clear summary there. Um, in terms of the small school strategy, um, needs to be really clear that that's focusing on the supports that we can offer and how small schools themselves can learn from effective practice elsewhere on how best to collaborate in terms of provision, but also in terms of staffing for resilience.
Yeah, I guess the, uh, the recent changes in the, uh, the staff pay awards is going to really highlight that as an issue, isn't it?
Yeah, uh, that's one of the factors in terms of pressures, um, but it's not the only one. Um, not least as we were saying, under coronavirus, one of the pressures that, um, has been all too apparent too often in our small schools is that tendency for a key member of staff or a teacher also to cover so many other roles, including of course, SenCo, um, and teacher for significant parts of the week. So it is one of those where governance models and staffing models is absolutely key to get greater resilience for those settings where we need them to meet the need for, um,
Nikki has her hand up.
Hi, Neil, just a question for you. Um, in appendix B, um, on page five, it says that obviously, appendix B on page five, um, it says that obviously the teacher grants are not being paid anymore because that's going to be in now the national funding formula. So is that covered the whole for the schools? Is it the whole amount?
Um, no, it's, no, it's not, and that's interesting. The, the grant never, never did cover the pay, the whole of pay. For twenty eighteen pay, the government said that schools should have been allowing for one percent. So they only paid grant above the one percent. Last year they said schools should be allowing two percent. So they only paid it above the two percent, I think it was two point seven five percent increase, but point seven five percent. The issue is, is for our small schools again, is that they were given grant guaranteed with a minimum of a hundred pupils. So those schools that got less than a hundred pupils won't see like for like grant when it's transferred into national funding formula for twenty one, twenty two. And it is going to be a pressure because for, for, for next year, what they're given, they're given extra money to cover off the historic pay and pensions increases, but they've been quite clear that, that they're not doing that for next year. So when we get the, um, admin pay increase in April and the teachers' pay increase next September, that will have to be, um, consumed within schools budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Which is going to be like very interesting, isn't it? And Jane Burrow, please.
Um, just on that point, um, I've remodeled my forecast for twenty one, twenty two based on those, um, changes in funding, the increase in the, um, people funding. Um, and as a school, we're forty one thousand pounds less. Um, so, okay, that's really probably about point five percent of our budget, but I'm just wondering what other schools, we're, we're not going to gain from this. So, um, I'm kind of disappointed, but not surprised that actually the funding is less than the grants that we've had in the past.
Could I just ask, Jane, is that on like for like pupil numbers or have you seen a drop in pupil numbers?
No, we've seen an increase in pupil numbers.
Okay, but a drop in funding.
But an overall drop in funding based on that, yeah.
I think this is going to affect every school right across the country though, isn't it?
Potentially, yes.
Yes.
So it'll be interesting to see what the outcome is, but, um, I think as I've said at this number of, uh, several governance meeting, um, there's so much going on, uh, at a high level nationally in terms of finance at the moment, I think it's difficult to predict what's going to happen in the next year. Okay, Andrew Faltin, please.
Yeah, on that comment, I think it's, it's interesting. I heard somebody else earlier this week say, um, I don't think we've ever known a government or a prime minister that's not had clarity of exactly where they're going or what policy stance they are based on. And so actually you can't even second guess based on the, the potential direction travel because it's just so uncertain at the moment. They just seem to be reacting on a populist basis to whatever the latest crisis is or the latest, um, fund is the people want to react to. So it does make planning really difficult in that context, unfortunately. And we don't really, they're going to be giving handouts as a result of COVID on all our bases as well, for schools and other sectors.
Yeah, I think it does, but any financial plans that they might have had twelve months ago have been so far blown out of the water by the COVID related expenditure, it, it's difficult to see what, what happens next, isn't it, for anybody, so.
But when you see some of the injections into some of the other infrastructure areas they're talking about, uh, just randomly coming out, it's, uh, you can't quite get a read on having spent it all year or having spent it all last. That's difficult.
I think the answer is we spent it all a long time ago. The question is how do we get it? Um, you look at the offensive defence this morning, but yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's interesting and all we can do, I think, at the moment is watch and, and hope. All right, um, I haven't got any more speakers. Uh, does anybody else want to comment before we move on to the recommendations, please? Right, okay. Craig McKey, please.
Sorry, I just, uh, I don't know if there was something, some information missing somewhere or maybe I'm missing it because this is my first meeting, but I didn't know, uh, if there was anything about where the money for the high need block had gone already. I didn't see anything about kind of value for the money or what they'd already spent the money on for the need for this additional point five percent.
Okay, Dwayne, do you want to give a, uh, thirty second executive, uh, summary of where the high, high need block is, please?
Yeah, so I mean, it's all spent this year, it's all spent last year by seven million. We, we were quite privileged last year in terms of the council could pay off some of it. We can't pay off any of it now without disapplication applying to the secretary's date. Um, we're looking at about ten million, eleven million overspend this year. Um, we've been, that's been eased a bit because the government has given us approximately five million, um, into this year's budget and they've guaranteed that for next year. Um, when we look, and when I looked, obviously I'm relatively still new to the Warwickshire County Council, and when I've looked at the spend, um, what we have got is quite a high spend on the high needs block against, um, schools in the independent sector. And what I can tell you is that that has gone down slightly. Um, also it is within, um, our specialist schools, more of our children who go to specialist schools, which are higher cost than they are if we were to maintain children within the mainstream school. In terms of projects, I'm looking at the projects to make sure that we are invested into our mainstream schools. I met with the project team today to make sure I look at the funding level because schools are right. You know, when you have a child that needs one to one support, you're not getting the level of funding with that child as you need. So a part of this will be able to remodel, look at what our child needs to push that money into our maintenance sector and hopefully maintain the children there, um, and then children especially, so we don't need to go out into the independent, but the independent sector, uh, we have over two hundred of our children which are taking nearly sixteen million pounds worth of funding from the high needs block.
Does that answer your question, Craig?
Um, I suppose it tells me a bit how well the money goes. I suppose I'd just like to be a, a reassured, I suppose, that, that you're getting value for money on it rather than what being spent, but how, how that impact, how that, that have a new impact is designed and I suppose also, um, that it's not just throwing, throwing more money at it just because we're going to spend, do you see what I mean?
Well, the thing what I was trying to do, since you moved into the authority, is really have a look how the money's being spent and try to, uh, move from having to, uh, put pupils in expensive placements and try to get more of that into mainstream. Uh, but nationally, we're in a situation where the demand for, for high needs support is, is accelerating nationally and, uh, the funding hasn't quite kept up with that yet. Dwayne, what on earth?
Very conscious, very conscious that, uh, some people with us aren't schools on for the first time.
Yes, correct.
Um, and it's been quite a journey over the last few years, quite a journey this last year, to make sure we don't have just intense segments in terms of value for money, in terms of send provision. And we have a very, very detailed programme of reviews to ensure value for money and a very, very detailed delivery programme against the thirty one projects on the send change programme. Uh, that's the assurance that you have is there is no part of send provision or programme that isn't subject to looking at what is the most effective practice nationally and making sure we're making the most out of every pound practically though. Um, I think it would be a positive offer if anybody wants to have a deep dive into the drivers of the programme, previous, uh, external reviews that are part of what we are doing now and the details of what all the projects are. We could do, um, a, a, a workshop or, um, a seminar session for anybody who wants to pop in and, well, here's all we've so far as well.
Uh, I think that would be very useful, particularly as you quite rightly said, we do have a number of people, uh, on here, uh, now who, who haven't, uh, lived with it at the development throughout the last couple of years, yeah, and I think that's good. Okay, Dwayne, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, well, I, well, I have seen everybody here and I've, I've really interviewed the last eight, nine months I've been here, I've looked at everything. Um, one of the things I have noticed is our, our alternative providers, um, their costs have risen, um, and as demand, uh, uh, so, you know, as the supply and demand has worked, they are as dear, some of them now as independent schools in terms of quality insurers. I'm working with our commissioners, I'm working with Marry Rooney, our strategic lead, to make sure that the outcomes are good or better. What I can tell you all, for all the money we are spending, our children with sends, attainments and outcomes are on a downward trajectory. So I have to assume that outcomes are not just based around money. Um, but you know, I, please be assured that I'm looking at everything, um, within the local authority and making sure every pound we spend is spent in, in the right place. And my main aim is to get money into our schools to increase the level of funding in our schools for our children so they can stay within their local communities.
Thank you for that. Connie Hagfield, please.
Thank you for having this picture. Um, just, just a few comments from a politician's point of view, which I hope will find, uh, the, the numbers of children that require these interventions is increasing, the complexity and cost of those interventions is increasing. And frankly, we don't have sufficient resources to be able to do everything we would like to do. Uh, we need more money from government and cross party, all kinds, whether it's across the chamber, are trying to do their best to make the case to government that we do need additional funding. But in the meantime, our task is to try and ensure that we use the resources at our disposal, all the resources at our, potentially at our disposal, to the best possible effect. And absolutely, there is a value for the money, um, element to it. It isn't just a case of more money means better outcomes. We need to be sure that the money is spent producing better outcomes, but we do need every penny we can get hold of and the recommendations that you're faced with making a decision on this afternoon could substantially help us in that respect. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you. Carrie Griffiths, please.
Yeah, it's really a follow on. It is, I, I think the value for the money is really important because I think we just, it, it seems to me that you're putting more money into a pot where there's a, a big element of that pot which we can't control. So for example, the out of county placements that are extremely high, um, are we just putting more money into that, those sorts of pots? And when you look at those out of county placements as well, and you look at the number of employees that are earning over a hundred thousand pounds a year in those establishments, you're just worrying, are we just lying in some of these private people's pockets?
Would you like me to come in here for that?
Yes, please, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, sort of haven't been especially in my entire adult life, what I do know and is the best outcomes we get for children is when they remain in the local schools, whether that be the local primary school, the local secondary schools, or in the exception, it should be our specialist schools. Unfortunately, what has happened, and I did raise this with the National Audit Office because I was part of that interview, there was four of us in the country interviewing for that report and I was one of them, what I actually said is, is that the mechanisms to control that market doesn't appear to be robust. Um, and in other words, years ago, when you had an independent sector, they were monitoring from central government and from local government to make sure they were producing good or better outcomes. What I am doing within Warwickshire is working with our commissioning group to set that standard for us, what we expect if we are having to place a child in a high cost provision. The problem we have at the moment is demand. What happens, you know, we have a statutory duty under the age of sixteen to educate and if all our schools are saying they cannot meet need, even our specialist schools, then we have no other alternative. But what I would like to do is, is change, uh, uh, that rhetoric, uh, in terms of getting that intervention in earlier, providing the right level of finance with the child in the first place, so we never get to a place where we're in a disaster zone, which from my observations thus far is that's where we are. We only seem to intervene when we're at crisis point, rather than, um, making that level of funding more to start with so the child can be, uh, supported. But it is a big tanker to turn, it is, it's massive, um, and it's not a tanker I can turn on my own, it needs all of us to be, uh, clear in that vision and clear in, in, in that language. But you know, I am working with it, I've raised it with the D F E last week when I met the policy office, um, sorted the leader of the council, um, so it is on our agenda and we are, you know, having them conversations, yes.
Thank you. Andy Faltin, please.
Yeah, a couple of points really. Um, I think it's probably important for the new members, without getting into the detail of what we're doing, to understand that we were in a similar position, and I wasn't here for this last year, but I believe we were in a similar position last year when we asked this question at schools forum. And I think because there was a lack of, um, the council's ability to demonstrate that we were on top of send, we, we did have a viable transformation programme, we've been looking to address the issues that were there in the system, um, schools forum rightly turned down the, the application for the, uh, point five percent because actually you couldn't see the value for money in what we're doing. And I think it's important to, to highlight that over the last six months, I think we worked quite hard, um, both within Warwickshire County Council and I've, I've driven organisationally a much greater understanding of what we need to wrap around the education service, the send aspect particularly, to try and make sure we've got the resources going into it. And we're pumping in between one and three million pounds worth of additional council money on the transformation side of things to make send transformation work. But as Dwayne said, it's a big tanker to turn around and it's going to take a number of years to impact. So we, we need a number of solutions to help us through that early stage whilst we, whilst, whilst the transformation bites basically. But I get the fact that we need to demonstrate to you in the first instance that we have a grip on this and we have a plan that we can move forward with, that will make an impact on that going forward. Um, and I'm hoping we've done that, but obviously the vote will tell when you get to that in a short while. Um, the other point I suppose, um, building on the, the placements, um, query, um, it's something we're seeing across children's placements generally, not just within the send world, we're also seeing in the disabilities world and the look after children side of things. There seems to be a fundamental market issue at the moment on all types of children's placements, um, whether it's, um, companies profiteering, whether it's, um, sort of, um, lack of competition within markets, there, there is an argument for some kind of national regulation and, There is an argument for some kind of national regulation and a stronger grip from a market management point of view for all the children's sectors. Currently, that's not in place, government haven't dealt with that. But it is an ongoing national conversation because it's not just Warwickshire that's experiencing this. And I take your point about it lining in the pockets of people at the moment. I think in some instances it is, when we're seeing sort of 25 and 30% increase in placement costs within a few months and particularly with the backdrop of COVID being so difficult. I can understand some increase, but not to the extent we're seeing at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Nicky Burton, please.
Hi, yeah. If I can reassure any of the newer members, myself, Jane and Rebecca sat on all the task groups from March last year to really look at the detail of the best value. We looked at all the detail within we've been spending in the past and looked at how best to be spent in the future. And we have many meetings and we brought that to one of the school forum meetings, I think it was in June, and really put our take on. And we, as a school forum representatives, really saw the positives in the forward thinking and the action plans ahead.
Okay, thank you. Laurie Granary, please.
Thank you. I've made some comment on this at the last forum meeting, I think, so you'll have to excuse me. I've had a couple, four or five years off the forum. I welcome what Ian said about the workshop and I'd love to see that. I've listened carefully to the comments and I'm not suggesting there's been any lack of effort anywhere. It's probably out of ignorance at the moment and I'll have to make my vote on trust or whatever because one of the biggest issues for me when I was on the forum and my experience in schools is there's too many chimneys in these organisations and there's not one single control enabler. So my question is, has that been addressed? And we've had lots of discussions in the past about we can only do what we can do because the money doesn't come to us, it goes to somebody else, you know, but we're all working together. Has there been any breakdown in that and has there been any success? Because I'm worried that it won't work if you've got too many chiefs and not enough because you tend to have a lot of different priorities in different areas. And I just don't know at the moment. So for me, the workshop was a bit lit. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's something that really worried me before. And I'm not in a position to make a qualified decision on where you are.
Can I just say, when I joined, obviously I joined in February, which, you know, we were three weeks below lockdown. And you know, I have to be open and transparent to what I saw. First thing I saw when I felt that the schools weren't getting enough money, yeah? And therefore, if they weren't having enough money as early as possible, then what we were getting toward crisis point, the children, it was just breaking down and we were looking for other schools. Likewise, in our early sector, we had no children, hardly any children with plans. And that doesn't go in line with the core to practice of early intervention. I've looked at the panels, I don't think in the last six months, seven months, there's not a stone I haven't lifted or a problem I haven't looked at. And I'd like to say that I've been really robust in everything. And some of the messages I've had to say, some of I have said has been perhaps weak leadership in terms of decision-making at panels, they needed to be more robust, more transparent, more equitable. And we needed to have a system that was built on need, not want, and the need was the driver. There was early intervention. So I've looked at the whole of, and I think when I initially pulled this change programme together, I think it was about 136 areas I felt we could approve on. What we've managed to do is pull all the areas into 31 distinct projects now. And I would say by far, I have the support of both the leader of the council and the CEO of the council, Monica. And I've been really supportive in what I needed to do while they've wrapped that support around me. And there's a big team of us now driving through these changes. But as I said, my main aim is to get money into the school as quickly as possible.
The programme is overseen by a partnership board, which includes significant representatives across the CCGs and school representatives. The programme is also driven corporately by a programme board, which includes the strategic directors for communities, resources and people. So you'll see there are projects on the programme which are specifically designed to make sure it is one path, one approach, but not multiple chimneys competing or creating pressures for each other, as it were, if that wasn't a mixed metaphor. It's a coherent, co-owned, driven programme. I think Andy earlier on helpfully showed how significant it is for what some people call the corporate centre or the resources portfolio. In other places, people have said this is the most significant change programme in terms of services for the council in the time ahead. It's also that for partners too. And our children can't wait either and our colleagues can't wait. I know we're all working at this at the same time as we are coping, responding and recovering from coronavirus. But there was a real passion and a real sense of drive behind the change programme. So yeah, really excited if anybody's able to make a workshop or seminar, take through the detail. But this is an owned and coherent and consistent programme that has depth. It isn't just around intent, which is so easy to muster.
Thank you. Cyril Hutton, please.
Thank you. I think I'm probably one of the longest-serving members on Warwickshire School, although I live in Coventry. But I have known through all the years that high needs spend has always overheated. There have been so many people in charge, so many plans that came to nothing. And that was the most significant reason I voted against the 0.5% being transferred last year. Since then and since the changes I've perceived and seen, I am very much encouraged and I shall be voting to transfer, to take money from schools block to the high needs block because I think it's the most exciting thing I've ever heard. I'm over 80, I'm being educational a lifetime, so thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Cyril. Nick Evans, please.
Hi, I just wanted to back up Dwayne really from his special school perspective in what she's saying and the transformation I've seen in the last eight or nine months since Dwayne joined us on the shop floor. I mean, I'm speaking of half of the special schools and saying that we are full. And the needs within mainstream provision, the inclusion agenda is so important for our young people and that early intervention, what we're seeing in special schools is children have not had the right early intervention and they're coming to us in crisis or been out of education. And that's really evident to me, you know, in the last few years. Since Dwayne's arrived, you can start to feel the changes and you can see them happening, you know, through the panel process. So I just wanted to add that from a shop floor, special school perspective.
Thank you very much. Tony Dix, please.
Yeah, it's just a point around information that comes out and me voting on something. You said it came out in plenty of time. It arrived with me on Tuesday. It may be different for other people, but that gave me very little time with three children to look after to sit down and go through it all. So actually, I could ask you if we can get things in more timely fashion, we can make right decisions on it. And also, you're asking for different funding, you say it's all being used in different ways. There's checked and sorted. I'm used to the forum, I probably need a greater amount of information given to me upfront so I understand where I'm coming from. I was deputy head, but I was deputy in curriculum, not deputy head, where you're spending money. So I don't know if there's any way these workshops you're talking about would be really useful because half the time, as far as I'm concerned, it sounds like gobbledygook to me. And if I had more time to digest the information, and I haven't for both meetings, haven't had the information in time, it would really help.
Yeah, I should just say, for Tony, it does take a while to get to grips with the business of this forum. I mean, I'm a complete amateur, I'm not a professional educationist at all. So it does take a while to get into the terminology, just like joining a governing body does. You know, when new governors join governing bodies, they do find it takes a while to come to grips with everything that's going on. But as you continue to attend meetings, I'm confident that your understanding and your comprehension will increase.
Yeah, it's just that I, you know, as somebody who prepares stuff for governing bodies as deputy head, I had to give them at least, you know, 10 days sometimes to give the information. And I'll apologize if I couldn't do that, but one day turnaround for all the information to be sent out, to actually digest it, look at it, research it a bit, I need more time.
All right, I think your point's to be noted. Thanks very much. Jim Burrows, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of add to the discussion. Obviously, as previous chair and sitting in the working group on the high needs, as Nicky's mentioned, there has been significant progress being made in the last 12 months. I'm not as up to speed over the last three months because I've been out of school. But my slight concern, and I will raise it because it's a frank and open discussion, is that maybe the request for the 0.5 is, I'm still not convinced, and I'm representing not just myself, but my head teacher and other head teachers across the local authority, as I am supposed to do as a school member, for schools forum member. We're not convinced that enough progress has been made to justify the 0.5% going to high needs block. One of the goals is to increase the number of EHCP students within mainstream school. But there's going to be a time lag with regards to that. There's going to be an expectation that we want more EHCPs being allocated at younger years. But again, there's going to be a time lag. Should the funding not remain within the schools block so that schools can react and deal with those students within their care, within schools and within mainstream at this point in time? It's a question I battle with constantly, but I'm just not convinced that the 0.5 moving into high needs and just being part of a reducing the deficit is transparent and value for money at this point in time. Although I would fully acknowledge significant progress has been made versus where we were 12 months ago. That's my concern.
Thank you. Fay Padfield, please.
Hi, really just to follow on, I guess, with what Jane says, that supporting mainstream schools with their SEN children, but not just those with the high needs and the EHCPs, but those on send support. Certainly, there's a big query for me as to how the change programme actually supports those on send support. And have you got the ownership, you say you've got the ownership at all these high levels of council. Have you got the ownership of your stakeholders, of your teachers, of your parents, to bring them with you on this challenge? As a parent myself with SEN children as well as a governor, I'm not clear on how that's going to affect my children who are on send support when quite often I see lots of families being pushed down the EHCP route because the send support, the very basics that are supposed to be done, are not done. You know, the £6,000 per child is not ring fenced and support is not delivered. So how are we funding that within the change programme?
Can I come in, Philip, here?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, what I have seen in the sort of eight, nine months I've been here, are some good schools do it really, really well. Some schools score above and beyond the call of duty and bend over backwards to be able to meet a child's needs. Unfortunately, there are other schools that perhaps don't do it so well. I think for me, what I wanted to look at first is how my services operate because within my portfolio, I hold about 13 different services. That's the EP service, STS, IDS, the exclusions team. And also what I have been doing is looking at highly performing authorities. So highly performing authorities with low cost SEN and what are they doing? How, you know, I've looked at the top 10 in the country and actually the three fundamental things they were doing was early intervention, yeah, getting the support in at the right time. It was about non-exclusion and having the conversations and it was about inclusion, yeah? So the three things go together. Now, within my service area, I've got over an excess of 300 staff. Now, part of the services I manage are traded, yeah? They're a traded service which schools buy in. And this part of my services are core and core funded. And during the last few months, what I've done is instituted reviews of the service to say, okay, how can I make this fair and equitable across the whole of Warwickshire, yeah? Across the primary schools, early year settings, post-16 institutions, you know, secondary schools. And what will it cost me if I was to take, for example, the EP service out-traded? What will the impact be on that budget if I was to take that out-traded and actually offer that to all schools for your child at the point of need, yeah? So unfortunately, I've spent the last segment finding out what the issues here are. I'm more than happy to share all my analysis, all my data and all the reports and all the strategy with you. And one of the strategies I've sort of been working on is around resource provision and making sure that we've got the golden thread for children's education through the system. So we've developed the primary resource provision, we've developed the secondary resource provision. So we're looking to embed that in our schools and invest in our schools. Another thing I'm looking at is whole school send and auditing of schools to look at need because the needs could differ between the north, south and central. And of course, I'm looking at that comes free of charge. But also what I'm looking at is how we train and educate as well. I mean, all the time here, I've heard the narrative about school, you know, our children are not school-ready. Well, I have them with five children and none of my children is school-ready. What we need to make sure is that we as school leaders or as practitioners are ready and equipped with the skills necessary to meet the children's needs as well. So I am looking at detailed training packages, investing in our resource provision so we can have a trauma and attachment aware. So I'm happy to share with all colleagues here the level of detail that I'm going into in the change programme. But right, it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, what I've got to implement can't happen by tomorrow, which is going to take a few months and years.
Okay, thank you. Martin Daly, please. No, still not there, is he? Andy Faltin then, please.
I think Ian had it out before me.
Okay, Ian then, go on.
Yeah, I think there's some other aspects, thanks to what you were saying in your question as well, that are absolutely important here. You know, when you're mobilising a massive change programme, there are so many, many stakeholders you have to have owning the programme and what it means in terms of project delivery and what it means for children and people and for practice. And a lot of work has gone into engaging with school leaders and there's been a really, really positive response from school leaders. And I think that's carte blanche, no, that's a deepening of the analysis and understanding, a deepening of the understanding of what's going to be needing to change. And actually realising that and understanding it at the same times they're trying to cope with the coronavirus day in, day out at the moment. So there's that real passion and support for the programme. But they and us also need to make sure that it is owned consistently with business managers, with SEN Co's and with the rest of the team. Because this isn't just around a review of services. That and changing the culture and practice in services is important, the same in panels. The same also applies to education settings, schools as well. So communication and engagement is a big part of that. And then with parents and carers, parents and carers have always got an escalation route in terms of individual casework if they do not think pattern provision for their child is appropriate. So there are systems there for individual circumstances to be picked up. There is a safety net through SENIAS, the advocacy and advice service as well for the parents and carers. There is further work that I'm keen to make sure that we deliver in terms of the parents and carer forum. We're working with contact to reboot the parents and carer forum and make it much more representative in terms of the range of needs and also making sure it's representative of the range of ages, across education and the range of communities. So it moves from being a small group, passionate though they be, to be something that's much more networked. more networked and much more representative of the range of communities that we work with. And then there's all the work on communications and engagement with every parent around the programme. So yeah, it will have good news in it around the piece of work that are making a real difference in children and families' experience, but also being open about what's coming up next and what are the challenges with it. Because much as everything I say on this programme is everything's based in practice, change in itself is sometimes difficult for people. Communication and engagement is part of that, but also bearing with them through the change. They're at the beginning, they're on the way through and they're at the end. Because sometimes people will be really anxious about it at the beginning, anxious on the way through and then really understand it afterwards when they understand that their child is thriving because of it. So yeah, loads and loads of work and additional capacity mobilised for each of those different bits of helping people through a change programme.
Okay, thanks.
So I probably won't be doing my job properly in County Council if I don't sort of explain what I'm about to explain. You may take the view, what's that got to do with us is not important, but actually ultimately will have an impact because of our overall sustainability as a council and the full position we've got currently within our meeting in terms of financial strategy. We are having to provision an extra £8 million per year over the next five years to support the deficit that's currently being projected. So we will have to set aside £50 million of council resources on the balance sheet just because we have this deficit problem, which is why the council's taking this so seriously in terms of the transformation. And that's allowing for the transformation schemes that we've identified within programmes being talked about already. Now, that isn't a sustainable position for the County Council and it's not all of ours or schools making because actually that's partly now to the lack of government funding to address the sort of expansion in number of age groups that are actually supported by SEN. And there is an issue around the £5 million getting next year, whether actually the government will carry that on into the last four years of the MTFS, in which case we'd have an additional £20 million we could take off. And we've still got a significant deficit. We cannot sustain and deal with all of that and keep delivering the transformation funding if we don't find a mixed solution to this in terms of financing it. That's the practical reality. So whilst schools could take the benefit of that, the money we're talking about here on a small scale individually, actually that also helps facilitate us to continue to support the transformation programme in a more false sense to fix the issue for us and yourselves all the time. Because if we can't put the means to transformation, that's going to have an impact on yourselves and us ultimately. So I mean, there's a hard financial reality about it, which you may say ultimately isn't your problem, but actually it's a shared problem that we need to address really. This is a point I would make.
Okay. Thank you. Nick Evans, please.
Yeah, sorry, just to say, as a special school, we provide outreach, SEN support to lots of local mainstream schools, which is something we're really passionate about. And in supporting all our local mainstream schools, and we've supported, I think, between fifteen and twenty so far, I can say to you, the culture is changing, the passion is there. It really is making a big difference and we, as a special school, with our level of expertise, are feeling really involved with this and can share our knowledge. And that's the crucial, crucial part is sharing our expertise and knowledge with our local mainstream providers and closing that gap between special and mainstream. And that's what we're really passionate about and it has had such an impact on so many staff across other local mainstream provisions we've been supporting.
Okay, thank you. Larry Granelli, please.
You don't move?
Can't. Yeah, sorry. I think I've got to say, I'm not negative about this approach. I think I've got a clear commitment from yourselves that you have got total control over this system. You're not reliant on people like the NHS or anything like that that's going to slow this down. So you've got control of it, you'll be responsible for it and you'll be accountable for it.
Absolutely.
On the commu... So for me, that's a step forward anyway. On the communication side, I've heard a lot about parents and schools and all the rest and I have no governance mention once. So with my governor's hat on, I'd like to see some improvement in the communications through to governors because governors are ultimately responsible for the school budgets. And I have to go back and talk to the schools I represent through the consortium and everything. So I've asked for this before as well. You have meetings with heads of schools, there's opportunities to involve governors, not all of them and not for all of the meeting, but very important things like special education, things like that. That message is not getting through to governing bodies in the consistency that you will require for support.
Philip, can I come in there, please?
Yes, Dwayne.
Yeah, so just so you know, what we've done, because this change programme is so significant for Warwickshire, we have outlined who our stakeholders are and governors are certainly on that as well. What I also want to bring in here as well is around health. Health is a huge stakeholder. And again, you know, I've started them conversations when we met with the DFE, we raised with the DFE, you know, the Education, Health and Care Plan. And fortunately, I do manage the Children with Disabilities Social Care Team, so I have influence over that. And we have escalated, you know, health to the highest level we can now to get that engagement and involvement. I think on the ground, the front door is good, but I think, you know, we need to start working more at the strategic level to get them buying. But, you know, certainly you are, certainly you're our stakeholder list.
Thank you. Nikki Burton, please.
Hi, yeah. Just had a little discussion today. Last year I did vote against the transfer. This year I absolutely have changed my viewpoints on that. And for me, I think we've flipped the question around. I think if we don't do the transfer this year, I think the high needs block is going to be in dire straits. And I think this could be the change that we absolutely need. Yeah, it's going to take a lot of work and I think, you know, we've got to get all head teachers, we've got to get all our private early year sessions on board, the whole, our health teams, our portage teams. But I think if we don't do it, I don't think we will see any change and then we're just going to go, as Andy said, further more into deficit in our high needs block. Just wanted to share that.
Okay, thanks for that. I don't think I've got any more speakers, so are we ready to take the recommendations, please? Okay, yes.
I think probably this is going to be difficult on a show of hands.
Well, I think we're going to have people put their hands up on the...
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
You're happy with that? Okay, well, in order to vote, I ask you to use your hands up function and we will count the hands up, if that's okay with everybody. So recommendation A is the transfer of 0.5% of schools block funding, excluding additional funding for teachers' pay and pensions to the high needs block for 2021, 22. All those in favour of that, please put your hands up.
Give it a few minutes to work through.
Some people are just raising their hands on the screen.
That doesn't help me because I can't see them. You need to put your hands upon the... You need to put your electronic hands up.
Give me a minute. The other option is going to add each voting member to see.
Yeah, it's going to take a while if we do that. Try this way first.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I have.
Neil, could I just interject? My hand raising doesn't seem to be working, so could you add me to the agreement, please, for that? That's Mary Ann from the borough.
Quite right, no, yours yet. I've added you. So I have fifteen in favour.
So Matthew Bandley from Central School are not sure where the minds working in my hands up too.
Okay.
Your hand is up, Matthew.
Okay, Andy.
All right, anybody else wants to vote in favour that hasn't voted? We can take that vote. Complete. Okay?
Four, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
All right, okay. You take all your, lower your hands up then, please. Right, okay, I think we're cleared. Right, those against the recommendation, please now indicate.
That's correct because the total is four against and the total voting members in this meeting is twenty-one. So seventeen plus four is twenty-one, I believe.
Okay, that recommendation is carried then by seventeen to four. Okay, can I ask you to lower your hands then, please? Right, recommendation B is that the local authority submits a disapplication to the ESFA to allocate positive funding to all our small academies and schools. All those in favour, please show.
That's eighteen in favour.
Okay, someone voted. Right, can you lower your hands now then, please?
What?
There's one. Right. Right, and are there any against that recommendation B, please? Now please show. Okay.
The only person who didn't vote on that was Tony.
Right. Are you... That's not Tony, is it?
Yeah, because nineteen members in this forum can vote on that.
All right, thank you. And recommendation C is that the local authority submits a disapplication to the ESFA to increase funding to all schools through the lump sum factor. All those in favour of that recommendation, please show.
So all nineteen have voted in favour.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've agreed all three of those recommendations, A, B and C, okay? So that concludes the business for the meeting, Neil, does it?
It does. Thank you ever so much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, just to remind everyone that the next meeting will be on Thursday, the third of December, again on Teams. So thanks very much for your attendance today and the force. You again on the third of December. Thank you.
Two weeks today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everybody.
Thank you.